Different.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. But I'm meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About twelve twenty-six twenty-two twenty-eight, I do those things a little bit differently. If we have a gathering, is it not? No, no, for us, we're meeting at eight thirty in the morning. So I'll go around Rome, uh, let's start with even very end, just introduce yourself.
Rich Shore, Chief Deputy for Sheriff's Office. Chris Bash, I'm Major Sheriff's Office. Chuck Massey as Sheriff.
Human Resources Director, Allison. Commissioner, Pete Foil.
Commissioner Stephen Goddard.
Layla, Lieutenant, Commissioner's office.
Chuck Nickerson, Finance Director.
Jason Henry, Superintendent.
Jill.
Kevin Warwick, Consultant.
Okay. Uh, and we have Jim Happy here as a, as a guest, like a public, he's gonna share some information with us later. Uh, in Zoom, at Zoom land, we have Jason Smith. We have Gene Gates. Uh, we have Christine McNeil. Uh, and last one will be Brian. And so, and then we have the Sheriff's Office, and I can't see the Sheriff's Office, I'm sure it's Captain Man.
Kevin, Kevin Walsh, Captain Kevin Walsh and Lieutenant Marshall Bennett.
Okay. Very good. So we're gonna start with our, the openings.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review about these proposals.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, Raymond Sam, Filtrations.
Um, I need to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review about these proposals and returning the recommendation.
Sorry, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Done, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard, yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, two vehicles, facilities.
I need to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review and evaluate proposals and return them to the recommendation.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. You vote yes? Uh, WWTP, electric cooperates.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review. Uh, value proposals and return with a recommendation.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? I do? Yes. Hillmore sixty-pound washer base.
I need to authorize the senior director of long-term care services to review value proposals and return them to the recommendation.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, strategic long-term care planning services.
I move to. Um, I need to authorize the senior director of long-term care services to review about these proposals and return them to the recommendation.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Uh, on the motion question, well.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, if you were.
I move to award the proposal for community computers to the following three vendors. S C W for an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Inaction for an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And Coffee Gov for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents, as recommended by the IT manager and senior director of facilities planning.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any discussion?
Thank you for, um, all of the effort of the organization of, of all the bids and everything, and makes it really easy to review and, um, easy to, uh, hold on. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, motion, Commissioner Goddard, yes.
Yeah.
I vote yes. Access control additions.
Move to award the proposal for access control additions to A three communications for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, ninety-two dollars, as recommended by the IT manager and senior director of facilities planning.
Sir.
How, I, just with only one vendor, how do you think the numbers came out overall and how does it fit within the budget?
Um, they, they definitely fit within the budget. Um, I think they're comparable. We also have a service agreement with A three, so that will work well for us. They'll connect our existing system and continue to support us.
Thank you.
Ready discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard, yes. And I vote yes. The next one, um, Jason Smith has requested that we table this temporarily, so we won't discuss it, so.
Sure.
Let's take a motion table.
Move to, uh, table the ward for the recent.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard, yes. Mr. Foil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Turn that back up. Okay, uh, Chevrolet Tahoe patrol vehicles.
I move to award the proposal for Chevy Tahoe patrol vehicles to the smoking Chevrolet for an amount not to exceed one thousand, I mean, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and further authorize the senior director of finance to seek appropriate financing as recommended by the high sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I have a little comment. I know, um, and this is through other, have definitely some information through the rest of my world and, um, one, I mean, I think overall this is a very, even though this was the only bidder, um, it's a very competitive price for these vehicles and these are, um, as I understand it, it's almost like sole source because these are the only Tahos that are, um, for police in all of New Hampshire. There's another dealer in Massachusetts, but obviously we'd rather, um, work with New Hampshire even just for, um, getting delivery and all the other details, so. And, um.
I would just like to say, it's about time they go towels, like Superintendent has here, so that's all there is. Way to go.
It's not be like my, be like Jason.
Further discussion?
Uh, but anyway, and that the prices are supposed to going up significantly on the twenty-four months, like getting in, like getting them now, it seems like it's like a huge market for next year, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
More discussion? There are none on motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
And even on my board guy, I'll vote yes. Second agenda.
Um, I move to approve the October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three public and non-public meeting minutes and the October nineteenth, uh, public twenty-twenty-three minutes.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, um, is there any additions, traction, minutes? Anyone like to talk about?
I reviewed the minutes, I thought they were fine, and then they look hot, a, like just a small with a time stamp on it, so of course, Layla's always like, got that attention in detail, so thank you. As I missed.
I'm waiting to try and catch her on something, I'm having a hard time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep waiting.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Surplus equipment. Charles.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire R C twenty-eight, eight, eight, A, and three thousand seven Chevy Tahoe from the Sheriff's Office surplus with the item to be sold. I need to fit in.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
That, that Tahoe's been here for a while.
Yeah, and so, and you saw in the surplus equipment request, just to go back to asset forfeiture, because it was completely seized through asset forfeiture and all the funding to maintain, it was done through that, but yeah, it's, it's been there, it's, it hit a point where it just is cost prohibitive to keep dumping money. And, uh, so yeah, we'd like to move it along.
Yes.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard? Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion two.
And this is the second part, because, uh, uh, the major said this was part of the asset, um, it was seized as part of drug forfeiture. I move to authorize a deposit of the proceeds from the sale of the surplus vehicle into the drug forfeiture account instead of the general fund as requested by the high sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, discussion on this case?
I'm not sure I understand why we're putting it in. So with federal asset forfeiture, whenever you see something under federal asset forfeiture, you can't use it as a way to avoid your budgeting process to dump it back into other funds, so if we seize the vehicle to say we're gonna use either the proceeds of that vehicle or that vehicle for the furtherance of drug enforcement, you can't, a municipality can't then take it, sell it, put it in their general fund, because then it creates the appearance that you're seizing entities to essentially pad your budget, uh, or avoid other things in your budget, so they're very specific that anything purchased or seen through asset forfeiture, once we liquidate it, it needs to come back to the asset forfeiture account and fall back under the guidelines and provisions of which we, how we spend it.
So this isn't unusual, this is the normal procedure.
We just, it's been a long time since we've had one that we actually had to surplus out.
Equipment rather than usually it's just money that you.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to be supplanting.
Correct.
Right.
And anything that's federal asset, you know, for the forfeiture, that's technically after report that on the schedule of expenditure and rewards.
Yes.
Almost like grant funds, so again, you can't supply it with.
So Chuck, Chuck, myself and Catherine have a lot of paperwork that we do with any dime that we spend out of federal asset forfeiture and tracking of it.
Very good.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard, yes. I vote yes. A one.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents for the period ending on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. We're going to read these on updates, uh, I'll go with, uh, Commissioner Foil.
Sure. Well, we're at the jail, we know we've had a bit of a COVID outbreak, and as a result, they've been on lockdown, but that hopefully they'll be out of lockdown tomorrow, so that's exciting. Now, as a lawyer, it's how we go back into the jail, it's a big number of. Um, the population is at one sixty-three, it's, you can see it's trending a little higher, it's been staying a little higher lately, um. Again, we'll be watching this, the numbers closely, especially as into the new year, which is really where we're, you know, the concerns about a, a, um, spike in the population, so, um, still doing, um, programs, we're gonna get a progress presentation today, so that will be, that's exciting. I'm really looking forward to that, especially as we move and the drug treatment for the STAR program that we're moving from thirty days to ninety days, which is, um, all the evidence and models show that, uh, that we really need more than thirty days for treatment to be effective, so, um, we really, uh, really that we're getting this presentation, getting educated, and that we're moving to that model. Um, over in long-term care, uh, this week we had two positive employees and one positive resident, but everybody is doing well. Um, we're ongoing work with the hospice suites and, um, we have some retirements coming down, and I think, um, these retirements, it's like, it's remarkable, so Dr. Singer, who is retiring, which is a big loss, both of these, uh, law retirements are big losses to the county. Dr. Singer is retiring after forty-two years and, um, keeps finishing up in April, and he's just been just a wonderful, wonderful asset to this community. So, um, there are plans, succession plans, um, in the works, but, um, it's still a big loss. And Marilyn Schreiber's, um, retirement party, a nurse here at the, um, is, uh, her retirement is on Friday, that's what, um, and she had forty-three years at the time. Um, it's just reveals the, all the, you know, we see here, all the dedication of, um, our staff here, how appreciative I think we all are, their service and care and what they give to our community, so. And, um, finance is, because he has.
Don't tell me he's busy.
He's not busy, yeah, he's just sitting around eating bonbons, no, I don't think I have. If you've ever been to Chuck's office, which is, oh, is, he is, the thing is, what's remarkable about Chuck, and I just wanna, it seems like it's scattered, but he's got, he's managing so many things, and he knows where everything is, so to the average person, it may not look organized, however, he is, I mean, he's remarkable, and, um, this week.
He did win a basket at the conference, which I'm sure, I'm sure he shared with you guys, correct? No? Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck, you didn't share with the commissioners at all?
And also an important, and an important contributor to trivia and other sort of, towards, uh, getting the county top, so we did have the county, uh, top this week, so, thanks.
Commissioner Goddard? To God.
Thirty-two years ago today, I married an angel. This is, uh, my wedding anniversary, and, uh, we're going to the, the, uh, county party tonight for longevity, and my wife is staying home, so. I bought flowers. I'm gonna make sure she watches.
Your wife is, your wife is wa-watching right now?
While, while, she'll re-watch the recording, she just loves these things.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't have anything else that would be important, thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I'm gonna let mine, I have my own, so we can keep this, uh, the meeting going a little bit quicker. So let's go to Seacoast, uh, Parkinsonians facility use policy.
Yes, I, uh, move to approve the request for the use of this, that's an honor term for the Seacoast Parkinsonians. Um, I wanted to pick up the issue with respect to their fee.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to have that fee waived, um.
They're not using any IT or anything?
No, no, and I think because it is for people suffering, you know, that gather and, um, who are struggling with Parkinson's disease, and this is exactly the type of thing that we want to support in our community, but not ta-burden or tax, so I move to waive that fee as part of my motion.
Did you want to second that?
Um. That was a long motion.
So.
And I, I mean, but.
Well, I was, I add, I gave some, okay, I will retract the motion.
It'll make it easier on later.
I added it at the end, the addition was at the end, but I move to approve the request for the use of the, that's an honor term for the Seacoast Parkinsonians and, uh, waive the, the facility fee.
Second, okay, motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I think we're all gonna bring that up.
All right, inmate administrative transfer, assuming, uh, August thirty, dash B, um.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three pursuant to New Hampshire R C D call in twenty-one, transfer one inmate to Carroll County Department of Corrections, two inmates from Hillsborough County Department of Corrections, and two inmates from Marinette County Department of Corrections, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, okay, uh, allspring investment account to signers update?
I move to authorize signers on the allspring investment account be updated to Charles Nick- Nickerson, Scott Greasley Senior, Robert Choi, and authorize information-only users to Catherine Casey and Elaine Newberry, as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not on motion, Commissioner Foil?
No, just, it's, it's allspring is the ring a bell, it's, it was formerly, uh, Wells Fargo, it's our trust D, it's like part of the, one of the permanent trust accounts, the nursing home.
Right.
And we can move the monies out, we very fulfilled all the duties for that parent and fund, but we came with the money, so I'll get the signers updated. So, and now it's changed to a different company even, so it's a different format that they require, so thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, adult medical daycare grant request?
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three to senior class for an additional client, three D, adding an amount of eight dollars per day for up to five days a week, as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Um, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, okay, we now have the power to get updates, I'm gonna go to do gates first.
Good morning, good afternoon, everyone, autopilot. Um, we have a lot going on this week as usual. I, just a few items I wanted to fill you in on, we replaced the storm door on the front of the delegation building and, um, did some repairs to the interior door, Cheryl was really happy to have it done before winter. We're still trying to, um, pull together the structural in for that building, but I have found somebody to work on the electrical, so we're packing away at it, hopefully we'll make some good progress this winter. We are bringing in the, the last of our hay, it's been an abysmal year between the rain and not being able to start until August first. It was thick, it was wet, it was wreaking havoc with the equipment. We just, you know, with tears in our eyes, we're just gonna have to bush hog the rest of it and hope for a good year next year. It's not a great source of revenue, but it is kind of a good source of pride for us, so we're sad that we won't be able to get more out of it. Um, we're getting ready to do the, the two bundle on the hot water heat exchanger that you awarded the, the bid waiver for last week, it's scheduled to ship Monday. We are, um, working on a, kind of an elaborate, turn this off, turn that on, get all these repairs done, it's gonna take us a couple of days. We're working with DOC and, um, we'll start the, probably on or about November sixth, so it's a big job we're getting poised for. Um, dishwasher has been going well, the drainage is run, it's buried, we have a, whoops, sorry, that's my clock. We have a pour tomorrow for the concrete, we have epoxy coating hopefully coming in Monday, Tuesday. They should start assembling the dishwasher Monday, and then the rinse table, which kind of goes the, the width of the room and curls around, almost like a, an assembly line kind of thing to the dish machine, is gonna go in Wednesday, Thursday. So, um, that was a ton of work, but it's coming out really good, and the staff, they can't wait for their new dishwasher, it's beautiful, so, um, it won't be too much longer. We had the results back from our first round of PFAS testing. We are required to test at both of the wells, at some of our neighbors in a housing development over there, at the condos and so on, there were trace elements here and there, but, um, it was all below actionable, can you guys hear a lot of noise?
Yeah, I hear it, put background noise, yeah.
Let me close, it's my shift change, hang on a second.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Jude, good communication. Good communication. You know?
Yeah.
That's what he wants.
That's it, exactly. Uh, one, one more little thing, well, besides the fact that we really are missing Evans and the inmates, it, like, we, we've really come to rely on them for a lo- a lot of things, and we're missing them terribly, I hope that, um, this little bump in the road is all over with for them down there. And finally, we had, uh, our annual inspection at the wastewater treatment facility, it was a new inspector, so they tend to be really stringent. The person wrote the nicest letter, the plant was beautiful, the results were beautiful, they've done a great job, you can't believe how old the plant is. I hope your boss appreciates what a great job you're doing, like, the whole thing, it was glowing, and there's so many testing requirements and deadlines that have to be met, I was just really proud of him, it was, it was very, very nice, and it went well, so we can all be proud of him. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jude. Um, gonna go to Jason Smith.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, Commissioner Foil reported on the, um, small little outbreak that we have, but I also just wanted to add into that we're having our next staff, um, in resident COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic, uh, on November thirtieth, from nine AM to noon for employees, uh, just so you're aware. Again, that's November thirtieth from nine AM to noon, you can also get the vaccine, of course, at your provider's office or at a pharmacy. Um, hospice, uh, renovations have, uh, begun, I just wanted to say thank you to Jude and her team. Um, I know they're very much stretched with lots of different projects going on throughout the county and also here, um, within the nursing home, and this is just another project, so thank you for that, we've been working very well with Dawn, uh, who's been designing these rooms, the boards are out front at the Singer entrance, so if you are interested in looking at the design, uh, of these rooms, um, they're available to look at. Um, in addition, uh, we have several retirements coming up, uh, we are in the process of interviewing for a new medical director. Uh, we started that process, and hopefully we'll make a decision in the next week or two with further announcement, um, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, I think Robin may have just, but that's, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the sheriff, sheriff and sayers.
Good afternoon, um, continuing to be, uh, very extremely busy over there, last, I mean, with hospital details coming in almost every single day. Um, uh, we had a new dispatcher start on Monday. We have a conditional offer on the next, another dispatcher, uh, we've had a bunch of good candidates come in, so I'm not gonna say that, I don't wanna jinx it, so I'm gonna leave with that, so.
Are you finding that these are lateral positions or new, new to the field?
New to the field.
Okay, so.
Both, both actually.
Okay.
Both actually, yeah.
And is the, I mean, that, the only downside is it takes a little longer on the training, but.
Yes.
But the benefit is they're, they're learning your system for the first time, so they're not him turned by.
Well, sometimes it's a good thing, but sometimes it could be a bad thing.
Yeah.
The good thing is, is you can train people how we want them to be, where they work for somebody else. You know, it's no bad habits coming in.
Right.
But, but, but on the good point too, I mean, some of these people with experience, it works out very well, so I'm just very happy that we have a new person started, we have another one. And, uh, but you gotta really think, I mean, bottom really shook things up, I mean, just working with us a big time. And the people that were, were getting applicants, which is, I mean, a year ago, nothing was coming in, so that's why I don't wanna jinx it, otherwise they'd have.
Well, also, it's probably a credit to both you guys and to Autumn and the HR team in terms of, I think what we're seeing, I've been seeing, it's like the, the time between the interviews and the offers are lagging, if it lags, the, the applicant goes elsewhere.
Well, that's what, that's, that's what we've done, we should, we, listen, when someone comes in, right? Let's, you know, give them a conditional offer, and that way we can work on the background, but we are out there as fast as we can to get these backgrounds done. So, well, thank you.
Excellent, um, Jason Henry?
Uh, a couple things, uh, we had five people start this past Monday, another one starting next week, four more, uh, believed for afterwards have passed the polygraph. Um, we gave an offer to somebody to, um, replace our, uh, M A T case manager, um, she has accepted. Um, so I'm believing for, for noticing. Um, the only bad news I have to give today is that our adult diversion, uh, director, Allison Mayer, um, put her notice in today. Um, to which she's been here at least ten years at the county and been doing this type of field for twenty years, that's gonna be a big blow, it's gonna be, so I gotta dig into that one, but I got that today, so I wrap my head around what I can. And beyond that, uh, we have presentation on our programs, we're excited to be here for it.
Okay. And then there are conversations.
Nothing to report?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Still making money?
Still making money, barely, barely. I mean, I was just a chance to register with you. There's nothing going on. There's nothing out there, most, majority of stuff we have is commercial.
The rates have been raised enough, so people aren't buying right now.
Yeah, thirty-year interest, so. See, I don't know, we're seeing, I don't know, I've noticed like a slight uptick in. I haven't, no, no. Just on the registry, it looked like there were more. Not so much in argument, yeah, not so much in argument, not yet, anyway, that's good.
I'm gonna go to Chuck, eight percent.
I mean, as, as normal, every month following a quarter end, so lots of filing, buying, filing, so now it's working on the, uh, the ARPA filing, uh, so that's fairly detailed, luckily there's no annual recovery plan report, because that's, wow, what we're up to now, thirty pages or so for that one. So, uh, just busy with grants, busy with working on, uh, various aspects of the, uh, UKG Pro Dimensions, uh, transition. Um, still working out some of the kinks with the, uh, new retirement system as well. So, um, hopefully they'll be done, but, uh, it's, you know, new system's a little bit slow, you get more reporting upfront, but it's, it's a bit slower. Or at least we've experienced that so far, but it'll get better in the, in the future. And, uh, as usual, just, you know, busy, yes, we, we did not win the county cup, sorry. Uh, third or fourth in cornhole, but we did pretty good, we did pretty good.
We were right there.
We don't speak about the trivia, but everyone else, the highest score is like a forty on the trivia, so.
Did you get the arrows with the question right?
Yes.
I would hope so.
Yes.
Thank you.
We did, yes, and Hamilton was the last name of the other one you were thinking.
Okay.
So, yes. Uh, uh, it's good to be back.
And lastly, what was the Muppet guy?
Statler and Waldorf. It was totally a New Hampshire question.
Oh.
Interesting. Interesting. And, uh, for some of us, Kath and I, we have the H H C officers, uh, retreat thing. And, uh, for some of us, Kathy and I, we have the NHAC officers, uh, retreat thing for planning for over the future for the association. So that'll be for tomorrow afternoon.
Graduation's tomorrow for the academy, I forgot too, I'll be down all for that. We, we, I have to run it, we have to graduate tomorrow.
Yes, all right, perfect. That's good. Um, Alison.
Um, just the, just the fun stuff I get to talk about, we have scarecrow contest, that's out there. Thank you for everybody participating. We've had stiff competition and there's a lot of back and forth chatter about.
I just wanna say one thing, cause I had asked you about the scarecrows and you said, well, I can't give that away, cause we're voting.
Correct.
But my question is, is I think I know the correct, the Department of Corrections scarecrow.
I can imagine that, I can imagine that. Okay, that's great. So, there's an email that's going out with all the pictures and numbers, so people can vote based on the number.
Has already gone out.
Yeah, great, thank you. The UKG, we're on UKG two on our side testing right now, the benefit modules and stuff, um, aligning everything up on that end of the. Tonight, we have our first years of service event and NHAC award winners. Um, the holiday, uh, gift that will go out for Thanksgiving on behalf of the board of commissioners. The cards are in, they're being stuffed right now. And the rollout of the items will start the week of the sixth. So we're gonna get them to the ODDs and I'll send you all some information on that. And, um, we're gonna distribute those to your, uh, staff on behalf of the commissioners. And I attended the HR strategic change at con, conference for the state of New Hampshire at the Omni. It was very compelling, a lot of things coming down the pike. Um, talked a lot about, um, pharmacy on the medical end of things, skyrocketing out of control. We talked about, uh, of course, our unemployment, uh, different ideas and a lot of retention, uh, discussion about retaining those employees that you have now for the transfer of skills, uh, being lost. And that's all I have to report.
Was it a night, good conference meeting?
It was good, they bring national speakers in, so we're getting a cross-section of what's happening across the state.
We missed you at the county.
I know, I wish I'd gone, but I couldn't be into, this is unusual. Next year, my understanding is maybe the NH is voted to go up to the Omni and it's gonna be different than the HR strategic that's run in the state. So that'll be nice to be able to participate, cause there was a couple of us that were up at that one that couldn't attend the NHC one. So, but thank you, so I have.
Thank you, Alison, I'm gonna go to Leila.
Thanks, for nothing.
Nothing, okay, all right. So that kind of wraps up the department events, um, side of things. There, I can, you know, we're a new business, old business, we have a new business. Yes, sir.
I just wanna say thank you for letting us, those that went to the, uh, New Hampshire Association of Counties Conference.
Yeah.
It was actually really good. Cheshire County did an amazing, I'm a doyist for, someone's been here doing this for many, many years, going to them. Cheshire County set the bar extremely high for everybody else of what they did. Uh, but also the speakers that came in, I thought were top notch compared to what I've seen in some years. I thought they did really well, getting good people, but overall, uh, you guys were there too, I thought it was really well done.
Really good.
I'll just, can I just say that it was really Kate Morgan about the speakers? It was, it was Kate Morgan, so just wanna give credit where credit is due.
Good.
Yeah, she did a great job.
They were good.
Yeah, she did a great job this year, she really did.
Yeah.
Yeah, paid a pretty penny for that magician, too.
Yep, she did.
But he was fantastic.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was good, we all had a good time, so that was good.
It's cool.
All right, so we're gonna go, we're gonna move on to.
We do have, we had one new business item on here, the, our towers, I agree.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Two items.
Oh, I see, we, oh, yeah, that we're, that's on the agenda, so.
You just haven't got it yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's just.
Sorry, I had a head written down over here.
Uh, I'm gonna go to the Department of Corrections, uh, you got a presentation, you know, it's presenting.
But it makes sense to, what I would suggest is that we, um, move, I'll make a motion to table the presentation towards, are you, are you guys okay with that? Okay, yeah, to table the presentation until after the conclusion of public comment before we move to, um, non-public.
Okay.
So after, I don't know.
Seconded, uh, all of the papers, AI, all right, so we'll move that one over for now.
No.
So now we go to sheriff's office, um, site lease agreement.
I move to approve the site lease agreement for the Canvia power sites for a 10-year term beginning November 1st, 2023 for an annual amount of $5,000, with a 3% increase after the first year and offer as a chair to sign all necessary documents as represented by the charter.
Seconded, made in seconded discussion.
Is that 3% per year or just 3% after the first year?
So the, the way it reads right on here, but, uh, further down in the contract, it says the annual lease payment should be $5,000 plus 3% compounded interest after the first year, so it'll, it'll be 3%, it'll be 3% a year.
Per annum.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, I think that I might, the 3% increase per annum for the duration of it.
Yeah, and I will say this property owner was, uh, very good to work with. Um, I think we can tell you some private, some, uh, private for-profit companies out there that own some of these radio sites. Some of them were looking to charge just on a monthly basis what this individual is looking to do annually and, but they recognize the fact of public safety and stuff like that. So if anyone has any influence on their local land use boards, provisions to always look at is when they do any projects with towers or even water towers and things of that nature, maybe look at having some language in there for require them to leave space at either reduced or free cost to public safety entities that need radio communication.
Yeah, good point.
The other thing is, I think this is the first time I've ever seen, from not come back, no change.
No comment, yeah.
No record.
Yeah, very good, okay. So, uh.
No question.
Now the motion, Commissioner Quill.
Yes.
I'm gonna do it.
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. How do you wanna do this now? Do you wanna go back to the Department of Corrections, the public comments, there is, we have, um, mentioning publicly, it's gonna be a small presentation.
Would you like to, I think it makes sense to do the presentation on, um, community power.
Okay.
And then circle back to the.
So let's do public comment, we have Jim Hadley.
Yes.
From Northwood.
Yep.
Who's here to, um, to speak with us briefly about, um, community power.
Inside the world, wherever it could be, so you can bring it on out of the tables.
Hey, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Good afternoon, my name is Jimmy Hadley, we're 35-year resident of Northwood, former selectman. I currently serve as a volunteer on the Northwood Community Power Committee, that will committee a wire.
[laughing]
Smaller towns like Northwood, you have a difficulty in getting volunteers, as, as you probably know. So one thing I saw was, um, this past week at the, um, Association of County Conference, there was a presentation by Community Power Coalition and I'm here tonight because I think it's a great, um, place for those. Uh, there's eight, eight communities in Rockingham County that haven't adopted a community power program for various reasons. Um, one of which it has to go through the Public Utilities Commission. So Sheshaya County, and I left the present right up on that, there's another sheet behind that too. On the, uh, Sheshaya County, they were the first county to adopt it. So what I'm looking for is the possibility of Rockingham County duplicating a program that Sheshaya County, um, completed. They have to develop a community power plan, they have to submit it to the Public Utilities Commission. And one of my handouts, I have the, um, docket that the DUC approved it back in February for Sheshaya County, which allows them to bring other towns of Sheshaya County into the community power plan without having to individually each town go through the Public Utilities Commission and get their plan approved. So, uh, the handout that, uh, what I did was I prepared all 36 towns in Rockingham County, but in public, now public service. Everso was rate, uh, several months ago was like $19.63 per kilowatt. So the supply side, but they recently dropped that 33% to 13, 13 and something cents. So on my worksheet, I can hear each 36 towns and dairy alone has saved over four, $4 million on their households.
Damn.
Number of households I got from the Department of Employment Security, the computer, community profile. Uh, Portsmouth has saved over three million when Everso has dropped their rate. So there right now is 12.18 cents a kilowatt. Unitile is 12.25, we have to like the total, 13.78. The community coalition, the answer is 10.9 cents. So they can go out to the market at any time, the community power. Now, Everso's can only go out every six months. You know, they can't go hotly if the rates drop, et cetera. So that's one of the advantages of community power, and you can opt in and opt out, your residents in the community. So, uh, what I'm looking for is, uh, if Rockingham County can do the due diligence and see if that's something they would consider duplicating with Sheshaya County did, make it a lot easier, be quicker for the 28 municipalities that haven't yet joined in Rockingham County, the community power plan. So their rates would drop to 10.9.
Yep. Um, Jim, I was at the NHAC, and I did take that, uh, the breakout session, um, which I found very fascinating. That's number one, um, here. And a lot, there's a lot of information where I also, it's a little bit of the, because the dairy did it a lot, probably a couple of months ago.
Yep.
Um, and there's a lot of questions that the, the, the town council actually had, um, that I, you know, I would wanna, I want the commissioners to, to also study a little bit more. But, uh, we did it in the town of Dairy, uh, and it does make sense. I, I feel it's, it's a great program. Um, so what I'd like to do is probably, um, have you invite us back and maybe also, um, community, community powers and get towards coalition, have them come and do, uh, a, a bit more deeper presentation when we have some more times, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, the annual conference is coming up around the second.
Yeah.
So I'm going for that again, I'm sorry. I'll touch base with them and make sure they're, they're more than willing to.
Yeah, have them call, uh, the office, Leila, uh, and we'll set something up, we'll agendize it and we'll put it on, we can do a little bit more full of detail.
Yeah, break together the presentation and that, and interview them, just some do, do.
And you do eventually form a committee, we have a committee, I'm retired, so I certainly would volunteer.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Forty years ago, I was on the governor's council on energy, we were lighting up the gasoline and.
Right.
And stuff, so, you know, I think energy, um, to get the best rate, you know, the worksheet I took together, the savings for Everso was, was $4 million over a six-month period.
Yeah.
Of the 36 municipalities, you know, big families, so, you know, any savings, I think.
Any savings.
That, you know, residents can have, and that's, that doesn't include the small businesses.
Right.
In Rockingham County.
And, you know, we have the second highest electric race in, uh, in the country.
Yeah.
Down to Hawaii.
Yeah.
We have your second. Okay, so we've been talking about this for years and years, this is a program that is in the element behind and, and helping the residents save a little bit a month, so happy to have you back.
Or that, so we can do some outreach to Cheshire County to see if they, the process enters, it's like a person in the gym hospital, so you've been the wheel.
Yeah.
And popular, their docket is online.
Great.
You know, it's like 38 days or whatever, so they've already done the background, so the Community Power Coalition, uh, has a consultant that, you know, that does, uh, that helps the.
Helps the counties.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I spoke with, with Community Power Coalition representative, it was at the convention and he made it sound like they've got everything ready for us and they'll walk us through it and it's not a lot of work on our end, that they're gonna, you know, tell us exactly how to management and we have quality with that. I, it only seems like it's a win and no one's forced to use them.
Right.
No, they can always not, no, everyone just chooses whichever source they want. And it's just, it's a win for everybody. Again, it's especially a win for the towns that don't have to go through the process.
That may not happen.
Well, and Winham right now is considering it, Atkinson is considering it, and they're gonna have to go through that process with, if they find that Rockingham County is doing it for them, then all they need to do is have a vote in March by the people to adopt to, uh, you know, to have the choice to opt in. I, it's a win-win, this is a no-brainer from where I'm sitting.
So I know Kathy said, said, uh, town council, I'm saying, too, one of the things that we've wrestled with, and I'll be very brief here, with, uh, in dairy is you're changing everybody's plan, all the residents in dairy.
Right.
You, we're making that decision. Now, they can always opt out, you know, there are people that say there's an opt-in, so you're like, oh. So we have to find out about that, because what we did in dairy was we basically said yes to everybody. So everybody, everybody in the town changed.
Yeah.
I didn't feel bad about it, because they were really saying, saving money. I didn't think anyone, but you can see where you wanna do, do diligence, because some people may get upset.
Right.
But anyway.
But this is the opportunity to have the towns, like, yeah, opt in for their constituents. So I think we can do it structured in a way that they're, you know, by town, by town councils are the ones that are making the decision to opt in or opt out for it. So we're not like bringing down a hatchet handle, it's an opportunity to do, particularly for the small towns that don't have the wherewithal to navigate the process.
Right, right. Uh, and I would also suggest that we should do that soon, so that there's plenty of time for all the towns to digest it and put it on their town, uh, ballot or, uh, meeting there.
My understanding is they wouldn't have to do that.
Correct, yeah, I found out the other day is.
I was told that each town had to vote.
They do it individually.
No, even if they don't, if, if they, we take care of all that basic paperwork and then each town has a choice to adopt it. But all they have to do is adopt it, they don't have to present the utilities.
But it's adopted by the governing party, not the legislative party.
Yeah. Anyway, we'll get, we're gonna dive into some details. Yeah.
Thank you so much for having me.
Jim, thank you very much.
I really appreciate it, and the other thing I just wanna say is that I appreciate the public service. It's very much appreciated, and I don't know that much about, you know, the services and everything within Rockingham County, but I mean, it's, it's, the services are huge and, uh, it takes a lot of talent, and I just wanna thank you for your service.
Thank you very much for saying so.
All right.
Thank you so much for coming in, this is, is just wonderful, it's like every, you know, you need one person to start, to get the ball, to have its action, so we.
You're welcome to stay if you want, or you, you wanna go, you can go.
Okay, I'm like, no.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, guys.
[laughing]
All right.
Thanks for doing this.
Long, long, dear.
Thank you. Thank you. Sure. Yeah, so I don't think I need to make the phone call anymore, I think we're just moving in that.
Well, you're studying, so we just like to frank that.
I think it's just.
Just, yeah.
I don't think, there's nothing else. We can, would you like to proceed with the presentation?
Sure. Okay, well, you can bring all that into the.
Oh, sorry, yes. That's a surprise.
Maybe give it a visual, I think.
Oh, you.
Oh, yeah, one of those, little, little. Razzle-dazzle.
Have you guys had all?
I guess, Commissioner Turell, you should, um, make sure that close out the public comments.
Oh, yeah.
But I think.
There's a commission, is there anybody else from, or someone that wants to speak? Nope, so we can move on, but thank you. Thank you.
So as we get this ready up and going, um, thank you commissioners, everybody being here for, always do presentation. Kevin Warwick is here, um, to, uh, sort of PowerPoint. Kevin has been our consultants of the programs and designed for the, the jail. Um, Kevin has had a company for how many years now, Kevin?
Many years, anyways.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Sorry. Uh, I've worked with Kevin for past 10 years, I made his projects, he is nationally known. Uh, Duchess County just built their, a reentry facility, which just barely opened up, which I'm sure he's gonna talk to in a little bit. Uh, he's helped me over the years do a lot of grants, um, leading expert on, um, jail reentry programs, works with, with the, the, um, SAMSA and a bunch of other places that he'll go into, um, about his experience, started in Massachusetts in corrections many years ago. Uh, helped start their first reentry programs down there. Um, just a plethora of knowledge, and over the years, I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with him. Uh, I'm a dummy, I just get the right people to help me out, and, uh, he's helped me out for many years on the ICE programs, those kinds of things. So I'll introduce myself and we're gonna just kinda tag team through this in front of you. Commissioner, like to give you a copy of the PowerPoints, you go through and, um, just copy of our STAR program, which we'll go into a little further as we move along.
Kevin. So we're excited about the STAR program, but also the new facility and building the program in the facility to really match what goes on. Uh, most jails around the country didn't design their jails for programming at all, so they're really, really poor. Duchess County in New York, for example, had one program space for a facility about the same size as Hillsborough, and now they have a fully designed program in building like yours is gonna be, that'll really work on what's going on. And what was exciting about this county and the way you did it is you designed a program that really made sense for this county. And so there was a lot of discussion with the architect and, and Jude and the team pulling together a, a facility that's gonna work for your county down the road. And, and so that's really good, so we'll, we'll jump to the next slide. Um. Hold on, hit the space button, hit the down button.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was town, right.
Uh. So the programming that we developed is, is based on national research. It's not a program that's specific to a county, it's what works nationally, what's been used all around the country. And so in Rockingham County. It's what works nationally, what's been used all around the country, and so in Rockingham County, the. Programming design they have, the curriculum we use is all based on evidence and things that we can prove work with with the population. Our ultimate goal is two things really with programming, is one, to help people improve their lives, and two, to have improved public safety. And those are the goals, and they have to combine together or they don't work. We can jump in there. Thank you. Um jails, again, jails are caring custody facilities for the longest time, for many, many years. Making sure people were safe, making sure they were locked up, and people were protected. The only issue with that is that the reality of. Being able to develop um. You know, programs and services is that people come back to jail, so the national average of people coming back to jail is seventy percent. Uh so if you don't get programming, don't get service, it's really high, and we're gonna go into. Our own recidivism study here and what's going on, but the goal is to do the things around here, to really link people back to the community, link them to the right service. Make sure that not only are they doing well in the community, they're getting a job, but they're also surviving. A big thing that's happened in the last several years is medication assisted treatment, very complicated process to put it into jail system. People were fearful of doing that. Um Rhode Island was the first place to do it, state Rhode Island, and then Franklin County, Mass was. And this county was the second licensed facility in the U S for medication assisted treatment. Um and it's beginning to now move along, and so people are beginning to do it all over the country, and New Hampshire's done a really good job of that. New Hampshire has also done a really good job with programming, there's five or six of the counties that have evidence-based programs and uh. We're working on a a national cool toolkit called Transition From Jail to Community, we wrote a toolkit about fifteen years ago about reentry. We're updating it, and we're gonna include New Hampshire in that process, we've been talking to Mary Beth about. Including Rockingham as one of those counties that have a whole state system. For example, New Hampshire has more evidence-based programs than Texas or California. As as a small little, you know, state system, there's been a lot of advancement here, so I'm excited about that, maybe.
The capita ratio on that.
It's pretty amazing, and it's a fact, because we've been everywhere doing this.
And amazing is, so they talk about M A T going into multiple places. As everyone knows, Jessica Norton was a programs director, health insurance director over there for many years. Uh and she was socked away by a national corporation who her only job is now is to help jails basically. Start M A T programs around the country, because she got great training here and everything, also got, and then her hands were dicked in here to start it and um. Yes, we miss her, but she's doing the right thing for multiple jails around this country, all starting from Rocky County.
Yeah, absolutely. We can jump in. So what we wanna do is look at who we're servicing in in the facility, you know, who are we gonna service? The people we service in the STAR program are people who are high risk. And that doesn't mean that they're dangerous, it means they're frequent flyers, or people have been here one, two, five, seven, ten times. And try to target them for programming. Traditionally, people didn't deal with that population because they're more challenging. But they're the people who keep coming back to your facility, and they need the most help, and now they're getting that help. So what kind of services do you provide? There's a lot of things that we provide, a lot of it is. Trauma-based substance use treatment services, so all the curriculum that has been developed uh by Mary Beth and the staff is. It it is set up for trauma, helping men and women recover, developed by a woman named Stephanie Covington, and it's nationally known, so. Most of the jails doing trauma-based programming, and that's only about a hundred out of the three thousand jails in the U S that are doing it, are using those curriculum. And responsiveness, are we doing the curriculum correctly, and we train the staff on how to do it? Everybody on the staff gets trained on the curriculum they're gonna do, they get monitored on the development of the curriculum, and we follow it forward. So dosage, and we're gonna talk about that as we go on, uh the Rockingham program is going from a twenty-eight day program to a ninety day program. And the reason for that, we'll go into more detail about it, is when people get more service, they tend to do a lot better. Think about people who've had trouble all through their life trying to fix all that in twenty-eight days, it's not enough time. So the curriculum looks the same, the programming looks the same, when we first started talking to people about the ninety day program, they were like, what are we doing? We're never even able to do this, and they're doing it now, and they said this is easy. So they've developed a ninety day program, and that just started just a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago.
So Rockingham traditionally is done twenty-eight day program, the STAR program, which you have the pamphlet in front of you.
Yeah.
Um. And been talking for a long time, moved to ninety days, but I did a Carol County, moved from twenty-eight days, moved to ninety day program, and now street program. So we have started it, um and actually the staff. Two years ago, when I told them this was gonna happen, they were in panic mode, that we can't do a ninety day program, like. The, one of the classes they teach alone is almost twelve weeks anyways, and they were, they're reducing it down to twenty-eight days, so. It really wasn't designed, it was designed longer anyways, now that they're doing it. Um and I apologize, Mary Beth's not here today, on charge, she she did have an appointment to get to, but um. Her staff is like, wow, this is awesome, we get to sit with the inmates longer, we actually get buy-in from them, we're actually get, we have time to work on their. Their plans, with them all kinds of stuff, start cram everything in, so they're much more relaxed. Um and as we go further, but this is the reason why. It's only gonna go okay at the building, we're doing, we're doing, as we did a study, you know, with cynicism, it's gonna be okay. The new building's where it's gonna really flourish, and we'll talk about that more, because that's where the building is only designed for those treatment. They go back to a unit that is people, all the mindset is for treatment, now they go back to a unit with other inmates who. Yeah, you know, hey, you still wanna do that stuff, you know, you're not going to that class. Some bad influence.
Yeah, that's fair, we can move from here. Um so most of the people that we deal with, who come to jail, are are people who have lots of issues going on in life, they have. Substance use issues, about eighty percent of them have a trauma history, mental health history, about eighty-five percent of them have a substance use issue. Eighty percent of that, again, is a co-occurring disorder, so a lot of the services are directed to that. But we also do things on a program called Thinking for Change, it's a cognitive curriculum looking at decision-making skills. That's a big part of things, employment is a big part of it, everybody leaves here with a resume, it goes to the programs in the facility. Run by Laura Lee, Mary Beth does a fantastic job, by the way. Um there's mental health treatment in the facility and the community, we talked about medication assisted treatment already. Again, that's given to people with fidelity, they're given the right particular. M A T option that they need in in the facility here, so that's really good. Again, other things, housing is an issue everywhere, right, not just for people in jail, but everybody, so they look at that, there's programming on parenting as well.
All right. No retail, just making it.
We'll be fine. We'll don't think, yeah, I disqualify, so.
Yes, you got it.
Yeah, we're on YouTube, killer bucks.
So this slide is gonna talk a little bit about the kinds of things that people do, when 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 people come into jail. New Hampshire has the lowest incarceration rate in the U S, so right, almost all of your people are high risk, come into your facility, if you're in Texas or Florida. Or Mississippi, most of the people are low risk in the jail. I worked in New Orleans for four years. I I I never drove my own car, I took the cab everywhere I went, because people get locked up for everything there. So in New Hampshire, you're, most all of your people are people that are high risk, and they get a lot of service. So there's an assessment that goes on with people, we look at their criminogenic needs and what goes on with it, does anybody know what criminogenic is? What it means? Basically, it means what leads you to jail, what are the factors that lead you to jail? A lot of times it's substance use and mental health and all that. We teach a class called Thinking for a Change, and one of the examples we use in that class is, uh you know, you're driving down the street, anybody ever. Gone over the speed limit, don't say that in front of the sheriff, but anybody, anybody gone over the speed limit before? So I'm I'm driving down the road, right, and uh commissioner's going eighty miles an hour, Jason's going eighty-five miles an hour, I'm going ninety, right?
Oh, you definitely getting a reckless opt-out.
Right, so I get pulled over, what's going through your head? How come they didn't pick up the other people? What else?
What's my excuse?
What's my excuse? What else?
Put the drugs away. Oh, print speed, given the commission's other.
Okay, that's a good lawyer. But if you're on, in in Montana, that's right, because there's no speed limit in most places, right? So when you look at it, there's only one fact, right? You're speeding, and so when we deal with people in criminal justice, they go through the court system and they think about getting caught or not caught. And what we teach people is about behavior, about their behavioral patterns and what they're doing, and thinking about how they live their lives. Because if you can do that, you're not gonna run into the system, it's not checks and balances, cops and robbers, it's about people living their lives differently. So that's what we we spend a lot of time on with with the folks that we're working with, and and that that process is, you know, been important.
So the criminogenic part of it is, you just justify why you can speed.
Yeah.
These people live on that level, a much higher level all the time.
Yeah.
I stole a bicycle, eh, it's a victimless crime, I did this, didn't really hurt anybody, but they live in that criminogenic thinking all the time.
Yeah.
We do it a little bit, we justify our speeding or something smaller, or it's significant, but that, but they do it. They live in that high functioning criminogenic thinking all the time.
Yeah, and and they're risking every part of their lives, so they're they're risking every part, the family, um their drug use and everything else. So we try to get people to look at it differently, so we assess everybody, everybody gets a case manager that works with them. We develop programming where they go to programming all day, and we evaluate the outcomes, how is it working? What's working? Is it working for men, working for women? What really excites me about New Hampshire is all the counties. Do gender responsive programming, I know the women are coming back in the facility, and I'm really excited about that, because women never get service in jails. It's it's my pet peeve, and no matter where you go in the country, it happens everywhere. So developing program for women, by women, is what we do in all the counties in New Hampshire now. And what we're showing is that women are doing better than guys, and all the counties we've done recidivism studies in, every single one, so.
Covington, he talked about, was a leading expert in dealing with uh with women.
Yeah.
Um Carroll County, thank thank all the Rockingham counties, what kept me feeling up there, and I was going. The program there was critiqued a lot to females, so I have a lot of expertise working with him about creating programs for for females. Um so we're able to bring that in here pretty easily, because we've already been down that that pathway of making that.
Well, makes sense, right? It's like you, when you talk about the.
Right.
Terminological basis, it's like, this is like their, this sources of. Trauma are probably gonna be significantly, not always, but somewhat different, and um they might be.
High level of trauma and small things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's design elements in the new facility that are developed for women, and the building itself and the way it's designed, with a lot of natural light. Helps with people who have mental health issues, it helps them function better in the building, and it keeps the officers safer. So I think that's an important factor, we can jump from there. Um. So there's a national model, I just mentioned that a little bit, it's called Transition From Jail to Community, it started in two thousand and seven, and it was a national. Development by the National Institute of Corrections to take a look at. What are we doing in jails for programming? Programming in jails, when we developed this model in two thousand and seven, there was a hundred jails in the country that did reentry. Out of three thousand. Now there's about fifteen hundred of the jails in the country that do reentry, not all of them are fully developed, like the ones. In New Hampshire I'm talking about, but a lot of them are there, so the goal behind it is, how do we protect the community? When people aren't committing crime. That's your first point of entry to keeping people safe. Now, by the way, when we talk about programs, not everybody's gonna complete and do well. So this seventy percent average can be reduced by that, we'll talk about that. So we talked about a systems approach to dealing with people that are in the system, and an evidence-based model, if you're doing assessments. How are you evaluating people? Are your staff trained? Are your programs correct? You have reentry programs, you're bringing the community in, all those things. Are are kind of components of that, and also are you evaluating? County commissioners, delegates should always be able to know why the, what, how the dollar is being spent, so is it being spent correctly? Is it been done efficiently with these kind of models? And these models reduce recidivism pretty massively over a period of time, and down the road, that's likely to impact you, now right now, the counts. In the state of New Hampshire are really low. That's a, that's a number that won't sustain over a period of time, it'll likely go up. And you wanna be able to manage your population in the facility, the great thing about the community corrections facility is you're gonna be able to. Manage a lot of your people in treatment in a safe environment, and it's, I think of all the designs in New Hampshire. Uh try not to say this around, because I've worked on all of them. The uh Rockingham one is the best I've seen.
Oh, good.
And uh.
What makes it.
Still we stole from the.
May I ask what makes, what you think makes it stand out?
Well, I think there's there's been new elements that we found about how the classrooms are set up for people, for example, um Jason and the staff have. People fit in their housing unit, that saves you staffing time and and the number of officers you've gotta have in the unit. Um the program spaces with technology or wireless setup, so you can do, let's say there's a COVID outbreak, you still do the classes. You know, all those, without having direct contact with people. And we're learning about that, right, when we do that, because all these are, all these facilities are, have somewhat of a dormitory style to them, so what this has is. For example, the Duchess County one I just mentioned, it's a really great model, but it's built very differently, and it's about. Four times the cost of what yours is gonna be, because they put a lot of correctional elements in it that aren't needed in the building. You know, things like a a million pounds of cement in the walls and, you know, cells and all that. So not having all that saves a lot of money, and and so there's a lot of things about the way you design your building over a period of time, and what I loved about how it went with. June and the team and the architects, is they sat down with the lieutenants, they sat down with the program staff to figure out. What to do in the building, there's technology in this building that wasn't available when Sullivan County was built.
Right.
They've developed that so they can operate the building on minimal staffing.
And yeah, I'm looking at other places, so it's not, so it was built in New Hampshire, and they built their community corrections, but they use sheet rock walls.
Yeah.
And they're already having problems.
Yeah.
It's still a building that gets a lot of use, so, you know, we didn't go that route.
Yeah.
We did, you know, and uh what colleagues, that's your grave, we're using is, and the housing units, the walls will be flat, like there's not, you won't see concrete blocks, so it looks. It looks nice, but going to hallways might look a little differently, but we were able to use a lot of things that didn't need jail type stuff. You know, we did on the sinks and toilets, because it wasn't supposed to last forever, not the orbit, they're beating on it, just that it's cost savings come down the road. But other things that we could do, the showers, the shower curtains, all these other things and elements that. Uh even doors that did not need to be the same as was at the other jail, because this is not, these are people that are low risk. And they, for some reason, have decided to just walk away, and go get a felony, I guess, for escaping, because. You're transitioning back to the community, that's where you're going, that's the whole point, in that building, we have. A dormitory suit to live into, and then you also have a work release unit, which you step down to, and then hopefully a electronic monitor to be at home, and then. Back out into the community, that's that's the goal, step down monitor.
Yeah, and then, so I think all those elements are there, so it's in between that, let's have millions of pounds of cement everywhere. To just have in drywall, it's it's somewhere in the middle of that, that functions really well, but also spends the. Community dollars more effectively, and I think that's what's exciting, and the most important thing from my perspective is. It's developed for programming, so where you can operate it efficiently and run a lot of classes and and do a lot of things. The staff now, in the building they have, again, wasn't designed for that, have to do a whole bunch of things just to get their class running every day, and if you go. Down and walk through the facility, for them to get a, just the PowerPoint up and running, it takes a long time, you go in that room, you'll just plug it in, you'll go. And everything is all set up, like this one.
So we talked about, just the simple things is food, and food, Duchess County, they're move, they're gonna have to move their inmates down to an actual lunch area.
Yeah.
Less labor intensive, so bringing, for me, my goal is to very minimal staff inside there, um. The cart goes to the unit, and they're gonna feed themselves on their trays on there and eat on there and everything else. I don't need an extra staff member down there, and when they're done, they're one of my cleaners, they can go down in the kitchen and bring it back down alive, so. Looking at ways, because when I looked at cabinets, I want as least amount of security staff to run this facility as possible. Uh to save money, because, you know, again, it's all of a dollar, it's like, you know, we are fully staffed, we did unfund some, so maybe we have to refund some later, but. It wouldn't be any more of a huge impact on us.
And that's important down the road, when you're trying to manage operational budgets, I'm sure, as you know better than I do.
Low impact with a lot of, low cost impact with a lot of ROI in terms of recidivism.
Yeah.
That's fair.
So these are the learning sites that were part of the national model, like, we don't have to go through them all, but you can see there's really small counties like Franklin. County, Mass, and there was a hundred and twenty-nine inmates, and then you get Orange County, California with sixty-five hundred inmates. All these numbers are a little down, from when this was developed, it's a couple of years back, but, so the numbers are there. Sullivan County was developed off this model fifteen years ago as well, and uh right now has the lowest recidivism rate of anywhere I've ever seen. And it's in New Hampshire, and a lot of the counties that we've done these studies on now are showing numbers close to that. But I think, you know, New Hampshire, and the way that people work together. To me has been a lot more effective than a lot of places I've worked, so some places with a lot more money. Don't work together and they end up expending a lot more money and their programs aren't as good, this one. And these counties will never have, I I don't think anybody's overstapped anywhere that I've been, in New, in New Hampshire, they're not. Like Franklin County, Mass, has more staff than all the New Hampshire programs combined. So, again, don't publicize that in Massachusetts, because I live right down the road, but that's how it is there. So the rule of thumb is, with a person like this, if you send somebody who's a heroin addict. Or an opioid active of any kind of one AA meaning a week, it's not gonna really impact that much. So these people get two to three hundred hours of programming, they get a lot of it in the facility, they get some more of it when they get released on aftercare. And all of those things are important, there's everything from, your county has an education position, which a lot of counties. Don't always put in, which is really. Which a lot of counties don't always put in, which is really effective. And I think that's a really good thing. Again, everybody leaving the facility with a resume to get out there and get a job. In addition to that, all those other programs I've already talked about. Substance use programming, a cognitive based decision making program, all of it is sort of combined and we can jump from here. Um, this is important. Uh. So when you think about it, if you develop a program like this, you can have a reduction of thirty two percent. From recidivism rates. So I mentioned most places, in New Hampshire, most places are running around the sixty percent range before their programming. Carroll County was twenty two percent where uh, Jason developed the program there. Um, Sullivan County is at eighteen percent, which is really low. Um, Merrimack is around that same number. Uh, a little tiny bit higher, but right in that range. So that's a real reduction. You think about thirty five percent of those people not coming back. They're not just not coming back to jail, they're not coming back to the courts, they're not coming back through the system with law enforcement in all different areas, right? All those things don't happen. They're not stealing from retail stores. So when when that happens with people, it really has an impact on a community, community. When you think about one person coming back nine or ten times. It costs a community a fortune. Um, and their lives are better and their their families' lives are better. We can go further. Yep. So this is the the program model here. Everybody gets assessed. Everybody's been trained on the uh, on the Ohio Risk Assessment. That's been developed. It's a risk knee tool. They go to the STAR program. They go through ninety days of programming. They can move to work release and post release treatment. Uh, the really great thing about um. The 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 building is that all these things are in that building and all the elements of this are all in one building. So people can move from one area to the next. As they go along. So if you get a one year sentence, you might have more time, you might go through a lot more of that. If you're in there for a shorter period of time, you might go through treatment and then quickly out to the community. And case managers are working with them from the day they walk in the door, medical staff are working with them. Um, you know, the MATS process for those who who get into that or is available for them all through the process now.
It's just a bigger than just, obviously, there's the jail too. It's it's a court involvement, the defense attorneys, prosecutors, anything else. And we still have a lot more convincing to go down the road because part of this is, yeah, trying to get, as you guys know. The real short sentences don't, are not as where we need to be. If we can get a year long sentence, we do ninety days. Um, in-house program and then do step down, then get out to release and we can actually monitor them under the year to make sure they go on their doctor's form and everything else. Sullivan County, again, fifteen years ago, it's taken a while, they worked with the courts. Not only they get a year sentence, they get a year, another year or two years after that of probation. So that way the following year, they can actually, case managers follow him out there. You're making your appointments, you're doing this, you're doing that. And they do well for a year, then they cut them off at the second year and say, no more probation after that. That's come down the road, working with the court after we prove that this stuff kind of works, saying, it sounds scary, like give more time, but you're really not. You make them go to programs, you make them do things they want to do, and it takes nine months to retrain the brain. Without being on alcohol and drugs, to actually start thinking in a way they used to without that kind of stuff in you. So it takes a long time. So having those conversations, but you know.
Just on that point, um, what I've learned is people that are on either fentanyl or obvious, it takes. Three years, their brain, they're doing wire. So I think the program's great. What's the, you know, past, what are we doing to these people past the ninety days?
That's the point about probation for components and some of.
Convincing the courts to.
So I guess my question is, should we set up, should we be setting up like. Brown bag lunches, the course love those things with like all the stakeholders, getting the. The judges and Superior Court, getting the county attorneys and then getting like the public defenders, getting it all together and having.
We did.
Oh, you did?
We did already. Uh, we had, we already have one because they had a lot of ninety days.
In Superior Court?
Uh, we should be able to buy all of them. Um, earlier, just all of them, because we want all about it now and opportunity. We're gonna have a lot more.
Right.
Coming up. Because we had a lot of, we're going ninety days in house, which was a huge change. They're like, oh, wait a minute, I go for twenty eight days, but they're trying to use that as a quick pro bar. Do twenty eight days and now you're out.
That one's suspended on completion and start.
Correct. So um, they didn't give me block back on that. Uh, so we will have, as the building is closer and closer, more talks, more launches. It's gonna be easier when the building's open to bring them over to show them.
Yeah.
And have that lunch over there, that's the concept of it is, yeah, yeah, we we. It's just another jail. It's it's really not. When you come in, you're gonna see it's totally designed as, it's not another jail. It's not. It's a community correction designed just to help people out. That are in these situations with their mental health and their drugs and us working with them. So that's what's gonna be huge, taking the brown bag lunches. And don't, don't worry. You guys be invited too. And I used to collaborate up in Carroll, which I will hear is my critical friends. My critical friends in the community. Are all the, uh, we bring in all the community stakeholders, I call them, community friends. Um, to come on in and we meet. So it's not just the courts. They can buy in from all those other entities that want to help these people out and they are fantastic because they drive the bus way better than I do. Because they actually have way more political influence. That's what we're putting out in Carroll. I got their influence, right? We worked with all them and they. Help drive that train. Um, and that's what we'll get to eventually.
Especially for like Judge, you know, in this case, we have Judge Drew Offley doing um, drunk or things that are the. Where there's already some of that cognitive based treatment going happening. And then it's like saying, extrapolating to here's a inpatient setting to kick off some of those.
He's a person we have to convince that. It's okay to send to an in-house treatment program. It is not right now, kind of believing in that. But I don't, I'll push that issue until we get to the facility, show this is truly for, uh, get them to buy in.
It's true treatment, yeah.
The problem is for some people who were really out of control with fentanyl and and drugs have changed. I mean, I've been in the system a long time, longer than you would have. And anyway, heroin addicts in the seventies and eighties and nineties were different, they're different. They progress slower. People go from zero to a hundred with fentanyl now. And so they can be a person with no addiction history and all of a sudden. They're completely out of control. And this program stabilizes people. That you guys were talking about earlier. And that's one of the things that some people need. So some people can be in a drug court model and get that programming in the community. And some people are so far along that no matter what you do in in a classroom for a couple hours a day, that they need to stabilize. And they become that risk to themselves, they can become risk to others. You know, as as folks in the Sheriff's Department know, when you see people in the community, they're gonna come back more and more often. And so. I think that's the thing that we have to understand as we jump forward.
If I had my pie in the sky, do ninety eight days in-house treatment program, step down, blah blah when you leave, go to, then you go to drug court. Yeah. Or drug court monitors, that's supposed to be the last step before you go to the state prison. So they can monitor you for another year, so you really have that tie in for the next, but nobody wants to do that. So, because nobody wants to go to jail. So they always say, we want a drug court first.
That's an alternative.
Alternative, like you, you know, that person's got a ton of felonies with that and they're still showing up dirty. In your courts and getting a couple of day setbacks. Let's get them clean, stabilized, blah 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 blah, all this education, training, everything else, deprogramming. Then the drug court. That's my pie in the sky.
Well, some of it might just take time, and we see a success rate for the programming that will obviously. Change people's minds in a way some people.
Yeah, and I I think originally, to to be honest, the people were looking at, geez, you know. A lot of the people making those decisions when they initiated were thinking, well, general programs weren't that good. Sullivan was the only program around at the time. Now there's six of them. Hillsborough, by the way, is now fully developed a program and they were, didn't have a strong reputation before, right? So if I can say that, um.
Total reputation.
But they, they had to be. Hills, Hillsborough, typically Manchester and Nashua had a whole lot of fentanyl issues.
Right. Yeah, and but they've got a superintendent who was buying into the model. They've got a intensive treatment program following the same. Kind of a model that Rockingham and Sullivan and in Carroll and a few others, Bellknap and others, I'm sure I'm missing somebody. Um, you know, a real Merrimack are doing. So they're following the same models. And people around the state get together, the program people get together, the superintendents get together and they talk about that. That's what's making New Hampshire's model more efficient than others that I've been around.
You talk about revamping the wheel. It's easy to give to the other people. Here, take our stuff.
Yeah.
Take my name off of that, go ahead, it's easy.
Yeah, exactly. So these are some of the programs that are there. We won't go into all of this, but there's programming all. All day, every day, three or four programs a day for people to go through. There's everything from. Thinking for change with cognitive programming to helping men and women recover, to lots of other programming you see here. Plus, there's. Education and employment programming. All of it developed, you know, to focus on people from the ninety days. And again, um, the staff are already talking about. And we're gonna do focus groups. By the way, we do focus groups with the with the people who are in the facility. We'll do them again after the first program to see what they think. We can go ahead and jump forward. Um, again, these are just some of the other pieces that that are there, graduation, aftercare counseling. So there's post, post-release support for people when they're in the program. They can check in with staff when they get back out. Because when people go back to the community, the first ninety days is critical. And if you're not in a direction of positivity, where you're doing something good with your life, you're committing crimes or in the process of going. So people either go and go in a positive direction or a negative direction. There's nothing in between. And that's what goes on with jails all these years. The reality was that jails weren't making people safe. Because they're local and they're only there for six months to a year. Now you're talking about doing something different with them. And people need to be, some people need to be incarcerated. You know, I'm a believer in programs, but I also believe in accountability. And people have to be accountable for their actions in life at some period of time. And what these programs can do is do that as well.
Everyone's different. When I was, I was fortunate enough, or I was at before, my counselor, I was able to put them in a community on Fridays.
Yeah.
Up in northern part of the county and southern part of the county with free office space for anybody that was. Uh, still on our programs to visit or even if we're not on our programs anymore, but did go through the jail with us, they can still go get free counseling and save taxpayer dollars. My, again, it's no jail, you know, I'm gonna be able to have the ability to have people come back in. And be, and have that contact with them if they want. And again, I have no problem too if they're. Need that contact, they're out in the community for us to help them, because we have those resources and they're not incarcerated because. It's a heck of a lot cheaper for me to use some of the resources we have than having them come back. And it worked for some. Doesn't work for everybody, but it did work for some, what I saw, physically saw, Carroll County.
Yeah.
We can jump from here. So then we'll just go through, these are just examples. We can pop through this and you can see that. These are the kinds of things that go on for the course of the day. The staff are on time, they're running groups, they're running classes. Um, one of the things that's changed in the STAR program is it was primarily one person who did everything a long time ago. Uh, since Jason got here, there's a multitude of people who can go. It's that person can, as all of you know, can leave, right? So you have to have the ability to keep the program running no matter what. So we can jump from here. Again, this is just another example of what a weekly schedule might look like with people who are in the program. Getting different classes all day long and there's homework in between classes. There's accountability for what they're doing in the class. If they don't complete the ninety days and they don't engage, they still have to keep going and and the staff work with the courts on that.
It's nice about a new building where it's just designed for programs, training my own staff. Staff inside is great, but they're busy with other things going on. When you can actually focus and you have the right staff members and they go to somebody. Are you using your skills, your cognitive based skills you've been learning for the past few weeks? No, why not? Because they're gonna be engaged, they know those classes, stuff they're using. It's much more powerful. My staff, you know, correctional staff can work with them on that stuff, not just the program. Uh, so it does make a huge impact.
A lot of places are starting to train officers on what trauma is, not to be a counselor, but to know what the triggers are and everything.
And said, two people here go through trauma.
Yeah, it can be useful.
So just so you know, the 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 sheriff and the sheriff went to a trauma informed class that the lieutenant trained. So it's what we brought to. It could be helpful.
Um, so we did, we did a recidivism study and the goal is to, we needed a baseline. So we started with our baseline study. And we take a look at everybody who's come back into the system in a year from when they got out. Okay, so we look at one year recidivism rates. Eventually, we're gonna be able to do two and three year studies to say, how many people came back in a year? How many people came back in two years and looking at that as well. Um, we want it also to look like if they came back for a new crime. Or a probation and parole violation. And we want to measure why they're coming back. So we have data sets, which people always get excited about. But there's a whole data set that they have to collect. Which classes uh, did the person attend? What other things? Did they have a job? Did they engage in the, in the community with an MAT provider? All those things are sort of being collected now. That we'll be able to match against the recidivism data as well. Um, we can jump from here.
That's awesome. But who's collecting the data and how are we?
So the case managers collect the data and it's, it's, it's not, there's only about twenty data items. I've worked with places that collect. Two hundred data items. One, people don't read them and two, people don't do them. So we're only talking about twenty. So we've been reporting on our RSET program for a couple of years, Chuck, on that data and we get it every day. So we're able to take a look at that. So that information is useful, but we're gonna match it to the recidivism as we go along.
That's awesome.
Um, yes.
Quick question, are we tracking demographic information on that?
Sure.
I'm just thinking, because I'm just thinking to that sometimes.
Females, that kind of stuff?
Race, gender.
Yeah, all that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good, because as you all know, sometimes.
Yeah.
You can get grant money just for providing information.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
So not giving first identifiers, but.
Switching to Central Square is also huge because we're able to build this stuff in the Central Square coming up. Because right now they're manually doing some stuff on the other side. So the the jail part, the jail. Integrated part of it, side of that Central Square stuff, we're able to build some of it so they can just put their data in and draw stays on it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because a lot of like, we're doing, with the Course and News Commission, we're doing a, a new CAT RMS system through. And with that, it's like you can get, do a ton of data collection. So we put that in right through our system.
We're building things upfront on that end, so just extrapolate the data we're looking for.
Yeah.
Makes our life, case management's life easier, it's real easy.
And Central Square is a more advanced software system than a lot of places use.
But they, they can, I mean, to your point, it's like they can really, uh, we can narrow the field or develop programming and software that is to get our. Catchment of data that we learn.
There's enough using the same system. Could you actually have like the universal like booking numbers so you can. See if not someone just went back to your own jail, let's see if they're popping up at other county jail. No, okay. Because maybe not coming back to your own, but they could be a friggin flyer across the state.
What we can do, what I can tell you is though, because of, since the sheriff's going to Central Square, I can tell you is us linking in with them. Is we'll be able to pull and say they've had another interaction with the law enforcement, if they've been arrested, those kinds of things, they may not come to jail, but been arrested, those kinds of things. There's a way to pull that data.
Yeah, if you're a social and D O B, then you can still track them across.
So we'll be able to within county at least, which is huge because you can't do that in any county right now. That's how you can't do it. But because most of the towns are going to, since the sheriff's right there, there are twenty four police departments just for us. Yeah. Pretty sure, yeah, they may go in that direction, see what. We're good communities, all gonna do that, they can all.
Yeah.
Because it's.
More data than anybody's ever had, I can tell you right now. Which will be very interesting to see how that, how that goes. This is right, you're right. I don't know if we go another jail. I know they've been arrested in another county, so I don't want to be. Any falsehoods out there. It sounds awesome. It's not true. It's really hard to collect that true data. Um, but I can tell you like. You know, uh, Sullivan County did go from over fifty percent recidivism down to eighteen percent over many, many years. Um, so. It it will transition, but we're gonna be able to have a lot of data to read and know that Johnny Jones is, oh yeah, he's been arrested three times down there.
By the way, when I mentioned that eighteen percent. Uh, two thirds of those people didn't commit new crimes. They, they were, they were in for probation or parole violations. So. When we measure, we want to look at both. So we look at both and we want.
Right.
You all to be able to say, hey, this is what we found and this is what we're gonna do. And by the way, it's not about. Good or bad, it's about how are we doing and how do we get better? You know, so that's typically what I find. Occasionally it's different, but that's usually how it is.
Well, the nice thing is if you can figure out, oh, okay, these are for V O Ps.
Yeah.
Then we can drill down farther. Is it a V O P for being dirty? Is it a V O P for absconding? Is it a V, like what are the bases for the V O P, which is valuable data in terms of the efficacy of our programming?
Exactly. And being able to then develop programming that makes sense for them. That's where the trauma based programming over the last several years are there. Most jails don't have trauma based programming in their reentry program. All the ones that I mentioned in Massachusetts, I mean, in New Hampshire are like that. Uh, I come from a place that was doing it in the nineteen nineties. A long time ago, but only two counties in Massachusetts do it. So even though there's advancement in a few places there, what makes New Hampshire special is you're all kind of doing it together. And you can see that there's been a reduction in recidivism here already, you know, at about fifteen percent. But we want to do better than that. And that's where the night, so the thirty day program helps. It it doesn't, it doesn't mean it doesn't help twenty eight days, but it means it doesn't help as much as it's going to help.
What do, what do you think that uh, when you establish that ninety eight program, how much further that would put on?
I think that could go down another uh, fifteen to eighteen percent easily.
That's good.
And then one question about the reincarceration rate, is that sentencing side or does it, that encompass both pretrial and sentencing? Because.
Both.
The only thing we all know with bail, the changes in bail and, you know, um, that it. Reduce the number of people being held. So it's a little bit hard to track in terms of. Legislative changes which have changed the.
Luckily enough, so you can go, we lived through the time when New York did this too. Also during bail reform, everybody got dumped out of the jails and then primed like through the roof. And now when they were scrambling to change back, like New Hampshire's doing, to change back where, eh, we kind of need a healthy balance here, folks. Because it, it's not working out and that's exactly what you went through.
Yeah, I mean, New Hampshire and New York did some things where a lot of states actually have an assessment before they let people out on bail. Yeah, I mean, New Hampshire and New York did some things where a lot of states actually have an assessment before they let people out on bail. Um, so you know, you go from, you know, all kinds of conditions that really affect poor people, but then they eliminated everything. And then, so that's not exactly the place to be either. You know, you go, you know, in the nineties, everybody was going to jail, like in Louisiana, they still, everybody goes to jail. You know, in New Hampshire, there's not many people going into the facilities. That can't maintain because crime rates.
Yeah.
Aren't going in the same direction as your incarceration rate. So your incarceration rate's going like this, and your crime rate's going like this. That that's that's not going to mesh down the road because the community is going to say. What happened here and how are we keeping the community safe? I'm a person who's spent their life getting people out of jail, and I'm saying. It's too low right now here. And so if you, I'm, if this is the first time I've ever seen that in the country, so it's a little complicated. Not not saying a lot more people are going to come in, but you're going to see more people come in. And then that data will be evaluated, you know, um. Duchess County built their jail off the bail reform law. It's going to be too small when it opens. Which is unfortunate. So, you know, you guys design your facility with a thought process over a thirty-year period. Where things go like this, right? That's the way to design it. You don't design it at the minimum. Pattern and then have to house people out. In that county, they're going to be housing out in a year, which is not what you want to do.
Yes, you won't have that issue.
We we can jump from here. Um.
We got like five minutes.
Yeah. So part of this is gender responsive programming. A person who works for me, Mary Hay, um, develops. Programming for women. We're going to be training people here on these kind of programs as well. There's been so little done for women around the country. Uh, Stephanie Covington was on a national committee. I was on it with her, but she was really the lead person to say, what do we need to do different? The way we deal with people in jails and and in prisons. And again, the staff here has already been trained on it. But as we get closer to the new building and you bring your women back, we're going to have more training. You can go ahead with it. Um, these are performance outcomes. These are the kind of things we were talking about, Commissioner, that we want to collect. Within our systems. Of course, we want race and all that, but these are things that really help us. Do people actually show up? In the community at their substance use treatment provider? Do they go to their mental health provider? Do they go and get a job and keep a job? Over a six or nine month period or a year, you know, and we're finding out, we did a study a long time ago with the programs that we developed. We had a really good job placement rate. It was over ninety-five percent. And then, um. But then they weren't holding a job a year later. Then we developed all these programs attached to it. So they got the employment support, but also the programming. And they they maintain jobs at a about an eighty percent rate, which is good.
That's.
For our group, yeah. Employment's changed all over the world now. We don't have time for that. Um, these are just examples of, you know. All the things that go on. Most, this is another county, eighty-five percent of the people have a co-occurring disorder. That's pretty much true in all the counties I've worked with in New Hampshire. It's about that number. You know, it could be eighty-three percent, eighty-seven, but most of your people are coming in for that as a driver. Okay, we can keep going. Um, this this is just an example of your medication-assisted treatment programming and some data from it. Uh, lots of people are getting inducted who hadn't been on it before, but had an opioid addiction. A lot of people come in. And have been on methadone and have been maintained on it. They they were on in the community and they were here. And you can see that the vast majority of your people are dealing with, you know, either Suboxone or Subytext. Or methadone. That's the primary drugs. People don't seem to maintain on Vivitrol very well. So uh, it's not a drug that people will do when they get out of the community. It's been around longer than a lot of them. Okay.
Do you think it's because it's shots? Vivitrol is like the shot base, right?
So.
So I think.
It's a shot based. And Subytext is one that's there for Suboxone. And so and some people will choose that, but the Vivitrol. Uh, just isn't one that people continue afterwards. So it's a, it's it's been around a long time, but people haven't engaged in it.
Do they have new meds that are they're working on to take some of these cravings away?
Yeah, what's the one? Uh, what's the other shot you can get?
That's Subytext.
Yeah.
That's only sixteen hundred dollar shot.
Yeah.
It's expensive. Sixteen hundred dollars a shot.
Right, because it work? How does it work?
What you said.
Shots of cravings and.
It can't, you can use either one and they, so you can use either one. It's just a different way of doing it. You don't have to take it every day.
So that's the problem. So watch, which that that's not becoming.
Yeah.
Another drug.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly. Our evidence. Yeah, and this is why it's so in a jail, having your own M A T program, they're able to control it so much better than on the street. Let's face it, on the street, yes, you can abuse it much easier. You can go sell it, you can order it, or any else. Ours is very strict, sitting in the hands to all these kinds of things to try to do that, which is also playing the courts, understanding, knowing we have a space to be safe.
Did anybody ever try cannabis to. Overcome some of the addictions that haven't been studied or looked at?
I'm sure it has. Um, the difference is there's such a difference. In the way that an opioid impacts your body compared to cannabis and other things. So, um. It hasn't worked out. Anyway, there's no, there never been anything that, uh, most of the research on this is showing that people need to go through this. I was never a fan of medication-assisted treatment twenty years ago, because the old methadone program, you get your drink and you nod out all day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But the newer ones are meant to give you a smaller amount, enough to get rid of the craving, but then how do you stay? And that's why. Sub- Suboxone and whatever version you use, a Subytext really can work, but it's expensive. And uh, methadone with the muck, the the two that people pick the most. So it's about ninety-five percent. In your county, it's more than that.
Stephen, they they talk about legalization. They talk.
Yes.
But while it may help with some of the illnesses, there's no evidence that with any of the. They're not assisted.
So again, these are the kind of things that we found, you know, when we looked at the program over a a an extended period of time, you'll save money. You'll have people that are more effectively returned to the community and safer, both for themselves and for others. Um, it's a cost-effective process for people going through your system to get them out of it. And the goal is, if you can stay out for a year or two, many people will stay out forever. And the goal is to get them out of your system. Not all. Keep it in mind, the best programs in the country still have twenty percent, eighteen to twenty percent coming back. So we're not trying to tell you that you're not going to have people in jail because people crush lapses. Look at this and it's, oh, we're going to be out of a job. You say, no, you. You all beautiful.
People entering the market every day.
I'm working, no one's there.
So, you know, the superintendent and, you know, myself and and uh, Mary Beth and the program staff have been working on a model. That's been changing a little bit over time. Again, the curriculum here before was always good. We've enhanced it with some of the trauma-based stuff. We've enhanced it with a few other things. The case management plan is more effective. The data, we're still working on. Making sure the data migrates into a system that you've got now, which is a lot more responsive than older systems were. You know, um, what you guys can do now is a lot more uh, effective, as Chuck was saying as well. And you do want to collect that money. For funders, but you know, also for yourselves, to talk to the community when you work with them, to the delegates, when you have the delegates come in and hear about what you're trying to do. And so, you know, we we know that this is going to be one piece of an effective model. Building that building. Is going to be another piece to that and designing it effectively. I think it's a great. Design and the way they put it together. And I think, you know, as they went along, architects listened to people about what you're doing. Because it's confusing what you're doing in this building. One, you're trying to save money. And so some elements are. Much cheaper and then some aren't, like the the bathroom fixtures. If you make them really cheap, they're going to get damaged. That's just what happens. So Jude and the group. Uh, there worked on that. The lieutenants worked on that. And then architects were looking, well, what what do you want? Do you want it to look like a community facility or you want it to look like a jail? And the reality is there's pieces of both in there. And so I said, it's not exactly one way or the other. You have to listen to the staff. And so Jason brought all, you know, John and all the lieutenants. Over to talk about that building. And then the programming in there is where the country is going with that. So we're trying to evaluate what works and what doesn't work. And whatever we're isn't working for us, we'll figure that out and we'll add something to the program design. Each of the programs in New Hampshire has got the base, basic same elements, but they have differences. Like this county has more of a strong educational component. Than some others, you know, um, Sullivan County has a, they just opened up a housing program, you know, and so everybody, well, let's open one tomorrow. Well, that's not going to work that way. It's going to take. A couple of years if you want to do that. And you have to look, weigh the pros and the cons, just like you did with the gentleman who came in about energy here. You got to evaluate what works. The good news is we'll be able to give you data on it and then down the road, you know, if there is a need to apply for grant money. You know, you'll do it in a way that makes sense for your community. I don't believe in writing grants and Jason knows this, just to get them. How does it benefit your community? If you can't answer that, then you don't apply, right? So we look at a lot of grants and then some are really effective and can be really useful to you. And then some just make your staff work harder. The people in finance have to fill out a million reports, right, Chuck? And then, uh.
That's a few million more.
Yeah, but you know, you want to make sure it works for your community and whatever it is, you know, like in Carroll County, they they worked on a project for about six years. The decision to move forward now is they've done what they needed to do with the grants and they're sustaining what they think makes. Sense over time and they're not saying other things that don't make sense to them. And that's what every community wants to do. But I really want to applaud the efforts of this county about what you're doing and really the state of New Hampshire about moving into a direction where. The programming of the facilities makes more sense because you're seeing. And a really effective model. Unfortunately, COVID confused it all. And you know, everything was. You know, nobody came to jail ever for like a year or two. And and so now that's changing back to where more normal numbers are. And I'm not recommending that you lock up millions of people. I'm just saying. That down the road, there's some people who need to be stabilized. And the jail can provide not only stabilizing elements for the living conditions, but also for the programming so they don't come back.
Well, no, particularly in New Hampshire. I mean, they're just as insufficient residential treatment programs. I mean, it's a real hurdle for.
Yeah.
I know. No, I mean, we struggle with that all the time and people come open. So. Even if it's helping at one level, just addressing the need, there is a huge need in the community for residential treatment. And so.
In this county in particular, and I've been around local counties now, um, has done a very good job supporting the programs or the jail. And we we have, we have been able to hire a, put a physician for Medicaid assisted treatment, um, you know, counselor, which we didn't have before. Which has been huge because I've seen exploding high people are on it. You know, as we move, probably as we will have more discussions as we move to this other building, because we're probably going to need at least one more staff member to be able to do. The females that come back, you know, and 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 all the males. So we're going to have to expand a little bit. Not a lot, but we're going to have to probably look at. Expanding our program department just a little bit to bring them back. And I want them back. There are, there are residents. They should go on back here for all their programs. Now they're in a, yeah, they're in the the program up in the trust program, like the Carroll, that's where most of them are, but. We will be doing a wonderful program and they can be here where they live. And we'll do what we need to do.
Well, we talked about like helping with rehabilitation. If you, you know, family members, it's almost inaccessible to go to Carroll County with regularity to visit. If someone's incarcerated. So this is like really nice that families can, it's help with the reunification process too. And family members can see the progress that their loved one is making through the process, which helps.
That building should be designed, all that kind of stuff, reunification for families and everything else is set up that way. So it's going to be, it's it's going to be huge.
Um, that's really some good information. I'm sure that, um, we'll be back having when we do the delegation, correct?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
I think you're going to see Cameron out for next couple of years, helping along with this stuff. Again, I'm no expert on anything. Uh, but I try to use resources that I have.
And this is kind of, uh, and Jason's really kind of led the way here. I know we started talking about the building a couple of years ago. It was, it was a passion I did, so. It's good to see that we're, we're making headway in that, you know. We've got the tools to the sheriff's department to get the drug dealers off the.
Yeah.
Thought we're also passionate enough to have people that are helping on these, these stories to get help done.
Yeah.
Good.
We're taking a good program.
Thank you so much for all your efforts and words.
Sorry, I'm a little long, but.
No. Thank you so much. Thank you. I mean, really, it's like, it's really important work. So thank you for all your efforts and making sure it's. We have the way, the best way for our community.
Very good. Thanks. Thank you.
Good job.
And let's see, where are we? Yeah, clear. So we're going to, we're going to go into non-public. And I promised Allison that she'd go first because she's got to get over. The.
I promise you that.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a mention.
I move to enter to now.
Yes.
I go, yes. So we're just going to take a quick thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to. Oh.
Thank you.
It's five o'clock now where you've entered back into public after being in non-public. And um, we had a number of issues and all have, uh, I'm moving to seal all those indefinitely at this time because they could render our proposed action ineffective.
Second motion made and seconded, um, on the motion, Mr. Governor.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't, yes.
And I just want to, I was remiss in that at the opening, there was actually one physical opening, so.
Yeah, do it.
Not, it's good. This is.
That's a ripoff.
Very strong, very strong. Uh, this is, um, for generator testing and inspections.
Right. That's good. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, although if they would say, I. Yeah, adjourn.